Having some. We're all set now. Thanks, Barbara. All right. Good evening, everyone. Our first order of business this evening is to host a public hearing for zoning specific to solar farms. So in our supporting documents, about halfway through or so, we do have a copy of the moratorium that we're essentially having a public hearing for. To provide a little bit of background here, the town council originally in September 2021 adopted a hundred, a 180-day emergency moratorium on solar farm facilities in South Berwick, which was then renewed 180, 180 days later. We've been making progress on this and we'll be doing, we're essentially entertaining the idea of one additional extension of that moratorium so that we can wrap everything up. So I know, Tim, you said that Tammy is here and would like to talk to us about some solar farm stuff. Is there anything else that we want to tee up for? Let me see. So we have Tammy here today. She is our new town planner, Sheriff of Berwick, and she, we're really excited to have her, and she's got some thoughts for us that I can forward.
At Tim's request, I took and reached out to gather information regarding land and these, so that we could take in, facilitate an actual ordinance for a solar farm, for a solar array specific to South Berwick, both based on your zoning ordinance, what you already have in place, and what you were thinking of potentially doing. So in the course of my reaching out, and because Berwick has done four solar arrays already, I reached out to some people that I knew, both at CMP and also a developer. So you have been provided three documents. CMP was my first choice to reach out to first. Unfortunately, the backside of the document is.
You don't have those.
Okay. All right. The questions that you had asked for Tim to get answers to, I reached out to CMP. Did not have any luck with CMP because I didn't think it was fair that the town of South Berwick provide a pre-application at the cost of $300 for just information on the substations. So then I took and reached out to a friend of mine that does development. And he was very cordial and provided me with quite a bit of information. In the area of all three boroughs, there are three substations that CMP has, and also the Pratt Whitney Substation also plays into this. Most of the substations in this area range between 10 and 20 megawatts per substation. Now, in the course of going through the spreadsheet, there is not much room left on any of these four substations to accept any more solar power. No, the residential is becoming limited also. There are charges that residential people will have to pay for the transformer to be upgraded, doesn't go to CMP, it's strictly the property owner's responsibility to pay for. So when you have a big developer come in and say that they want to take and put in a solar array, the first thing they have to do is spend that $300 and go to CMP with their pre-application to see if they even have room on the substation in which they're going to be located closest to, or in the area of to take and feed it, the added power.
Just in my mind, so they have to spend $300 to find out.
So the person that I contacted had also submitted one wanting more power. He gave a six and a half million dollar invoice because there was not enough power in the substations that were in the area that the government was developing. Six and a half million dollars to the developer to upgrade these substations. So between the three boroughs, there's not much room left. Not much room at all, because when we share dual substations, that means two towns now play into it, and if you don't have that much room left, who's going to get their application in first? There's no way of finding that out unless we would just submit a $300 pre-application just to get this information. So in the course of talking with him, and Tim, I believe is going to get you the information. It's all broken down for you on the front of the email. The gentleman I talked with broke it down so that we would all know exactly how much power was left that we could possibly develop. And also his comments, because I told him we were trying to develop ordinances, not only in Berwick that he already knew about, but also here in South Berwick. So two different towns, two different ordinances, two different requirements. So he made the comment that if he would have been able to come to South Berwick, he would have loved to have been able to take in new power here, but because there was no room left on any of the substations, six and a half million dollars to upgrade it to a developer is detrimental. There's no way they can make any money, being a developer, to spend that much money to just get their first water job at the door. So there's a lot of information, and when it comes to the solar ordinance, the planning board is looking at all kinds of options between zoning, between what district, is there a residential area near that district? And in the performance standards, I've recommended that they set up based on the ordinance, well, the zoning district that they're going to be taking and putting the solar array in. If there's a residential area, they make it buffer wider than in a commercial area. As far as the glare from a solar array, because of FAA requirements, you cannot have glare on any of your solar arrays because of the planes flying overhead. So that's one piece that we don't have to worry about. FAA has already taken care of that for us. So if you take a look at the information and the planning board, until they get the ordinance signed out for solar, is going to be having workshops in advance of each of their planning board meetings to continue to work on this.
Thank you, Ken. So there's some new information that, what, what I thought was important for the council to hear is that any developer, ordinance or no, if any developer wants to come in, probably for a little while is going to shy away until somebody figures out how to beef up the electrical system here, the substation, so that they can tap into it. Still need the ordinance, but I wanted to get some information back from both Tammy was complaining to me and Jen, and I, I think it's important for you guys to hear that, so.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
This is the recommendation of the planner to support the extension of the solar farm moratorium, solar farm ordinance moratorium.
Most definitely. I'd rather do it once as opposed to doing it and amending it, amending it, amending it.
Yeah. Anyone from public have any thoughts, anything that they want to say about solar farm or training?
Kat Robinson of Brown Street. I just want to say the unfavorable spending.
Anyone else in the room or on the phone?
Yes, let's clarify just a little. How many kinds has this been?
This will be our third extension.
Almost sounds like some are going to qualify to get in.
Potentially, there's very limited space left.
So that's that. Done.
I just have a question. I guess there's a new development being put in on Junction Road? Is that like earlier, pre-approved or?
I'm going to be honest, I'm not sure.
Yes. I, I don't have the quote unquote. It's, you know, it's like 30 acres, eighty area. Yeah. Maybe you've got to prove for the moratorium. They're building them now.
That was the first one that was approved by the.
Okay, what is earlier than?
Yeah, that was the start of what the planning board is recommending.
Okay.
Sorry, sir. Can you state your name and address?
Charlie Bear, Paul in the road.
Okay, thank you. We, I just anyone who speaks, we need to go over very soon. Thanks. Anyone else in the room or on the phone regarding solar farm or training? All right. We will go ahead and close the public hearing for the solar farm moratorium at 6:42 PM. And I apologize, we have sort of a, a little bit of a clunky agenda this evening. Our next item of business is to go into an executive session to interview potential conservation commission members. So we'll begin the meeting, we'll go into a quick executive session, we'll leave the room, you guys can stay here, and then we'll be back and we'll continue. So I'm going to go ahead and call our official town, town council meeting to order. We have four counselors present, John James is not with us this evening, and we can all rise towards.
I'm glad to meet you. United States where we are, in your republic, where it stands, one edition under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And Chair, move to section 1, MRSA, section 405.68.
We have a motion in a second. All those favors, say aye. Any of those? Motion pass four zero. Right. We'll be right back. We're interviewing. Thank you.
Chair, I'm going to come out of the executive session.
We have a motion in a second. All of the, any discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any of those, motion passes four zero. We are back in our regular meeting. Thanks for your patience, everyone. Our first order of business is approval of the following minutes from July 12th, 2022. Any, before we take a motion for this, any suggestions for edits from the council? You didn't see any, Joe? Okay. All right, I'll take up a motion then.
Okay, I'll move to accept the minutes of town council, July 12th, 2022, as written.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signing the treasurer's warrant, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero.
Oh, she said.
Sorry. All, all those in favor of approving the minutes from July 12th, 2022, say aye. Aye. Any of us? Motion passes four zero. Thank you, Barbara. Sorry. Jumping ahead. Now, the treasurer's warrants.
Madam Chair, I'm going to send the treasurer's warrant in the amount of 176,679.74 dated July 21st, 2021.
Can't get any rights. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this warrant? Jen, you have a question. Why, we have two for the same date. One is to close out 20, close out previous fiscal year.
Close out. And that will probably happen at least two more council meetings. So we have one check run for each fiscal year.
Got it. Okay. This first one, do you know, is this for the previous?
The first one is for fiscal 23, more than about the city of Sanford.
Okay. Okay. So the treasurer's warrant.
One seventy-six.
Yeah. Okay. So this one is for this year.
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of signing the treasurer's warrants for 729.22 for fiscal year 23, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero.
Madam Chair, again, I'll move to sign the treasurer's warrant for 359,739.12 cents in 721.22.
Thanks. We have a motion in a second. This warrant is for fiscal year 22.
That's correct. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of signing the treasurer's warrant, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero.
Madam Chair, it looks like the Great Works presentation might be a little bit, might be, and consideration of Ryan's time, I'd like to move that up. Also, I move to take the post presentation number two and move it up to the top of the list. Ryan Hill calling from number two.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion times four zero. Ryan, we will, let you keep the, so, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you for having me, everybody. I'm Ryan Hill with Firepoint Investment Management. I'm sitting here thinking, in our nine years of working together, there's always events to talk about. Tonight, I'll share with you a little perspective on what's going on in the market, where we've been, where we are, where we think we're going. I guess I'll start 1970, right? So looking at, this year was, through the first six months of the year was the worst start for the S and P 500 since 1970. So we're talking 52 years, it looks a little older than me. We haven't seen this type of market, and it can happen, but it's a rare event. Of course, what's causing it? We have inflation at 40-year high, we have the Fed that we're going to hear from tomorrow raising interest rates to combat, that's said inflation. And of course geopolitical events, Ukraine, Russia, just the, you know, byproduct of a pandemic, right? Supply chain issues, you name it. There's been a sea of uncertainty. I'll remind you, from inception, we've been at a period of balance in our investment approach, roughly about a 60-40 stock-to-bond portfolio. Presently, we're about 62% stocks, 38% bonds and cash. So the defense is helping us a little bit, but as bad as the stock market has been, bond market has also been equally disappointing. In fact, it's the worst year for bonds ever to start. So, but I look at it, so 1970, not my favorite year for new music bands. We lost the Beatles and signed the Garth, that year. Not just that we have a tough stock market to start, but it did have a happy ending, the final six months of 1970, it had some recovery, though it lost about 21% for six months, final six months, gained 27%. And we remain optimistic, as difficult as the last six months have been, you know, typically when you see a drawdown of that magnitude, it does bode well for the next six to 12 months. Since World War II, we've had seven times where the market has pulled back greatly in a six-month fashion. And in each of those times, six and 12 months later, was positive with a pretty good recovery. Of course, we need a lot of things to go our way. We need inflation to soften, we hopefully will have a Fed that threads the needle properly, doesn't step us into recession, the word is being thrown around. We do think if a recession is delivered, it should be on the mild side. We have a pretty healthy job market. Unemployment rates, we have corporate and consumer balance sheets that have been pretty healthy despite these high prices. Consumers are after spending, some of that's the byproduct of the pandemic, right? In two years, we really couldn't do a lot of things. Now, the attitude is, well, I don't care what it costs me to fly, I don't care what it costs me to drive, I'm going somewhere. That will taper off. In fact, I heard from Walmart last night, that basically said consumers are spending differently, right? A lot more of our income's going towards groceries, energy, less towards discretionary items on apparel and flat-screen TVs. So it makes sense. But again, you know, markets have this ebb and flow process, our balance approach, and Tim, I don't know if you circulated. So our balance approach, it's not bulletproof, it's going to dance with the market. The design is to try to endure the good days, but have enough defense so it softens the fall and not so pleasant days. Through the years, it has delivered. Last 12 months, we are off about 11%, which, you know, I'm looking at it, our last down year for the market was in 2018. And as much as I think we might have a bounce due in the second half of this year, it may not be to a level that brings 2022 to a positive level. Take it, we did that, but if that happens, it's the first down year since 2018. If you recall, I was upstairs in March of 2020 presenting to you, and those were pretty dark and gloomy days then. Shared some pretty anemic numbers. Who knew, six months later, recovery, we ended up reaching a new high. I've been doing this for about 25 years, and what I tell clients and investors, one thing bear markets have all in common, they eventually, they eventually die. Bull markets are up markets, bear markets are down markets, and right now we're in a bear market. Peak the valley, the S and P 500 dropped from the January 3rd high to the June 16th official, about 23%. So kind of gives you some perspective. We have had a little bit of a, of a bounce back, I don't want to say it too loudly, so the market doesn't hear me, but July has been a decent month, the best month so far in 2022, but this is an eventful week. We've had, we have Microsoft and Google report after hours, we have some other mega cap needs reporting this week. We hear from the Fed tomorrow, and we get our GDP report Thursday, which might reveal some contraction. Atlanta Fed says we're officially in a recession, but we don't really know that yet. So the hope is that if recession is delivered, it shouldn't shallow, not deep. Hopefully, you know, consumers and corporations can weather that storm. But since inception, we've averaged a little over 7% growth. When you think about since our June 2013 commencement, we've seen some great times, we've seen some tough years. Let's say 2015 was a flat year, 18 was down. 2020 looked like a disaster when it was here in March of 2020, but did have a little bit of a happier end there. So some themes of the portfolio I mentioned were roughly about 60-40 equities to fixed income. We are with US to international, a little bit of a tilt in value stocks versus growth, which actually has had some outperformance, although in the last month, we're seeing growth stocks start to deliver a little bit more. And of course overweight to large versus small-sized companies. But we are a go-everywhere type of approach. We own a little bit of everything. I would say we asset allocate underweight. We overweight, but we never own many. We want to own a little bit of everything, because yesterday's loser could be tomorrow's leader. And I should say that this plan is near and dear to my heart. I grew up in Elliot, so I'm a Marshfield alum. I also know very actively the sports community, coach a lot of esports. My girls are from, from Melville's University of Georgia. Senior at trade academy, so I jumped the border, but I hold that against me. Still a lot of the Marshfield.
Any questions for Ryan from the council?
Thank you very much for coming in. It's, it's good news, but good on you for, for sharing. Might be some, some optimism on the horizon. But looking ahead towards our, our goals of dispersments at the end of the year, it doesn't look great right now.
Yeah.
I think they said we're out there saying about applying for a bond from the grant, we're monitoring carefully, and it's do have a positive return by December 30th, and we'll have money to give out, but we have to have the money. Nice. Will you caution the optimists?
And you hear that optimism, it's served me well. My personal and professional life will tend to have better, more good days and bad days, and that's true of the market as well. And the hope is that we do have that bounce back. And as you know, with an investor, we need to kind of look at it with integrated return of years. Hard to call the market over the next three to five months, or the next three to five years, and I think that we should have more good days and bad days. So hopefully a lot of the bad days are in the first half of this year, and we'll see a little bit more of the green in the second half.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for, for managing these funds for us and doing the best we can to come get them to the city of Sanford. So thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So we just took care of reports of visitee number two. I see a lot of faces here. I don't know who's planning on doing the presentation. All right, go ahead.
Sure, sure. Okay, my name is Tim Smith. Volunteer at Great Works Regional Land Trust. I'm also serving as the project manager on this project. Thanks for making the time. I think it's our third meeting on this project. It's the the opportunity to conserve probably 62 acres of bubblins and about 10 or 11 acres of, of entitled down off of Old Fields Road. Land owned by Sarah Cullen and Chris Magnuson. There's three parcels down there. They have given us a time, their, their families are both going to not to continue owning these properties, and they have offered the opportunity to, if the community wants, to sell them for public use. And that's why I'm here. Sort of three, you know, sort of three objectives for tonight from the Land Trust's point of view. What is to, you know, continue with that town, town support for this project? And the support in several different ways. Some of the grants we're working on need a municipal applicant, so you know, hoping that you might agree to be the applicant for some of these grants. In other projects, we've done this, the Great Works actually does a lot of the heavy lifting and the grant writing. But when it requires a public entity to submit it, it's submitted under the town's name, the Great Works' co-applicant. Some federal funds that cannot come to Great Works, and that would be another part of it, that if the grant is successful, the town will need to accept those funds for this project. Those are a couple of ways the town could help. We're also interested, like we talked before, in having the town consider a warrant article in the fall to perhaps support this project. Again, that's not only helpful in the money we need to raise for it, but also sends a real message to the funders we're contacting, because a lot of them, like particularly the federal sources, are there decided in, you know, either Washington DC or Atlanta or somewhere. But the question's always is, does the community support this? And, and the answer is, you know, you, you don't have to answer it. If you can say, well, the town voted to contribute some money to this, that answers that question right there, that you might be really using words. Do you have a couple of slides? Are they available or?
If somebody else has a screen share, ask their mentor, share their buddy, but cut off, I can try.
It's not that important, but.
We have them here.
Oh, you do?
We do.
Okay. All right. Okay. So we did, let's just keep going ahead.
Yeah.
Anyone watching can see them in the supporting documents on the terms website.
All right. Oh, fine. Well, thanks for clearing that up. Since when we last met in, in May, a couple, a number of things have happened. I sent you the resource information from the Maine Natural Ears Program, the Wettland Survey. That was essentially the, the report from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, called the Bane Project, which just showed the importance of the natural resources and water resources that exist on this site, sort of ranked very highly for them. So that kind of, you know, helps build that case. And we also met with the neighbors, had some, you know, interest whether the neighbors supported it. So we have been reaching out to the neighbors in that immediate area. We had a neighbor meeting, attended by ten, ten people. They were very supportive of the, of the project. And we started since that meeting to expand into talking to other people, and generally, we hadn't run into any really opposition to this project. So it seems to be moving along, it doesn't mean, it might not be any, but we haven't encountered any other people before. And, and we've also been working, and we're just about completing the purchase and sales agreement. We both land noticed for the three parcels, one land notice, our common, two parcels, and Chris Magnuson owns one. And so we should have those, or actually, I'm expecting those purchase and sales agreements to be signed this week. So we're that close. And the purchase and sales are based on the. So we're that close, and the purchase and sales are based on an appraised value. So we'll be doing that, an appraisal, probably in the spring to determine the price of those properties. And we structured the purchase and sales agreement that way, because in our federal grant programs, they will, they're participating in projects, but they have to be based on appraised value. So, you know, it doesn't matter whether this is said what the landowner wants, too much, but it depends on what the appraisal will support. Both landowners have been generous and agreed that they would, you know, they would accept the appraised value for their properties. So we're looking forward to get that in writing and documentation. So, then it's the, the other thing is sort of, again, if you move the law, it's a couple of pictures of the habitat there. Two of the parcels were a tree farm, so there had been some logging activity, most originally done in November of 2020. But that is already coming back, actually, those photographs of that site were done in '21, so this year, it's even all quite a bit more different. A lot of, a lot more grasses have moved into the cleared areas, and trees are starting to come up, so it is starting to regenerate itself. The Magnuson piece, which is the 12 acres just to the north of that, is largely untouched, pretty much a, just a natural forest. I took a walk on that a couple of weeks ago, and I couldn't find no evidence of really any cutting or harvesting or mutilation. And it might, might be the first forest since if we've left to come back from fields. I mean, the trees don't look that old, and the trees look more like in the, I don't know, 70 to 80 years. Sometimes it's tough to tell when they grow so densely, because they don't necessarily get big when they're old. I couldn't find any, there was no cut stones or anything down there, so it seems a very natural condition. So that looked very well. Again, we've been working with, one of the funding sources is actually due this week, is an application to the Coastal Estuary Land Protection Program, it's called Cal for Shore. That's, they have a letter of interest due on Friday, that's what I've been working to submit. That again, has to be, you'd have to be, the town would have to be a co-applicant in that, because the federal program is part of the infrastructure bill that was passed by Congress last fall. So we are applying to the state for that, and the state selects three projects to then forward to the National Office for Determination of Funding. So we're working on that to get that letter of intent in. So if you get selected, if your letter of intent gets selected, you then have the opportunity to submit a full application, not a full work. So that's the way it would work. And so I have that, one of the slides does have that budget on there, so you can see that the budget of how we were asked to look out. I might have a suggested work number of $250,000 from the town. That's just suggested, I mean, certainly expect to have a conversation about that. But I did break it down on that budget sheet of how, you know, how that might be broken out. Again, that's just me looking at the other potential funders, what they will pay for, and what they won't pay for, and trying to fit in, you know, the flexibility that the town might offer to meet some of those holes, you know. Some of the other funders, like the Land Trust made future, I have been for $470,000, $480,000, but they will only pay land funds, they won't pay anything else, they won't pay for stewardship, they won't pay for closing costs, they won't pay for public access, they will not pay for anything else, but they will pay for the fee interest of the property. And the Cal program is probably the biggest there, we're asking, that funder asking for $775,000 for, it could be a big ask this year, so that's probably, you know, although they don't require any match to their money, but as you can see, I'm only asking them to actually pay, actually don't have that number, but I'm asking them to pay about 35% of the total project cost for that. So I'm hoping that will help out this year and make this grant a little bit more competitive than it might be if I was just asking all the money from them. But we'll see, I mean, again, it's going to be a state competition, and I don't know what the other projects are that have submitted.
So, yeah, so you said earlier, and this is really helpful, that you're sort of looking for two things, us potentially be co-applicants on grant applications, causing me to sound.
And one other thing, thank you.
Yeah.
I was a town to be the potential owner of the property. Because again, with these federal funds or some other programs we've looked at, they require either a municipal or state ownership. And I did talk to Bureau of Parks and Land, and, you know, who manage Bonwood's, and they are interested in this parcel, in this property, but they do not have the ability to make a decision on whether they would own it this quickly. They, they, they asked if the town might be interested in potentially holding the land, and then transferring it later to Bureau of Parks, and that might be one option. But if that could be, other than that, we would be potentially looking at the land as an owner, if the grant required.
Okay.
And, yes.
So you're looking for the town to potentially be the applicant or the co-applicant on various grants? Money, the $250,000 which you're going to throw out there, and then also potentially the owner of the property if that's necessary. So if we like, talk about those kind of three things separately, for the grant applications, I know you were speaking about a letter of intent on Friday and all that, like what's the timeline in which you would sort of need, do you have a timeline, I guess, for that?
Right, I need to send that in, and that's just the state, so we, I understand they have to have all the, everything exactly decided, we'd be good if we could, but we don't have to. It really comes down to that total 14th entry to have those three things, you know, would be helpful. Because at that point, you're actually putting in the formal application, that we then go, if you're selected, to go to, to Atlanta.
And so for these grant applications, you said that like, the Great Works Land Trust would do like the majority of the heavy lifting on that, and we're sort of the
Right.
submitters, I guess.
Right.
So if they're like, I'm kind of wondering from like Tim and Jen's perspectives, are any like administrative anything that I'm not accounting for? Like any concerns with us being co-applicants on any grant applications?
Yeah, and also we probably have to do is come up with a letter of support for them, which would be a big thing. Not, not just us. You know, Tim and Jennifer, to check with NNA, see what their position is. I know that when the insurance changes, CEO to come under their umbrella. And we thought we were kind of fine when the main tort claims act. Because it was town-owned facility, and then they wanted certain things to happen. And so it might be the same, you know, look into the records over then, as far as the town forests. See if there's any, any things that would affect.
Right, then, you're just talking about the grant application, right? That's a true value of it.
If the town, the town would have to own the land, therefore we would have to carry the insurance.
If that's a grant requirement. For federal funds, that's usually a grant requirement, that the federal will not award a land trust like Great Works, because of $100,000, but they will award it to a municipal.
But if, what we're saying is if that is the case where we end up owning the land, then we're now responsible for the insurance for that property.
And Great Works would be, as offered in the past, it would be open to finishing that property with the town.
Thank you, I'm just trying to figure out like all the logistics of what this looks like. And then, so that's talking about grant applications, as far as us sort of, us meeting the council, like making a decision, I would, I would suggest that we sort of need to approach that on a grant by grant basis. Like, if there's a particular grant that you'd like us to be the co-applicants for, I would imagine we need to kind of take that up as, and take action on it and vote, and say, yes, we're good with that.
Well, it would be, like, the first one would be this Cal grant.
Yeah, okay.
Just as another data point, the town farming's plant survey is out right now, and there is a question on that data survey pursuant to this, is whether or not the respondents would be in favor of big increases to
Okay, so the question raised, would you support the expenditure of town funds even if taxes go up to acquire or protect more open space, either through the purchase of land and or easements? Then our results are due in early August.
Okay, great, so that would be an interesting data point for you all that have here, and mine also for us.
And just for the first words about tonight, you know, sitting here as five of us with supportive staff, it's sometimes very difficult to make a, make a decision on behalf of 7,500 people. So we took this opportunity through the comprehensive plan to get that insight, to give some feedback. See, I'll come back.
And certainly, in the other towns, the warrant articles have provided that feedback well. The other town that did push on, you know, warrant articles for conservation land, because it then goes out to an actual vote, and it's not hypothetical, you know, in that case. But you'll actually.
Well, we need, we need to have the warrant article paper.
Leave it.
So, so this, this might be the best we can do, because we might not know, warrant article has to be specific to a certain practice.
Town council, as I noted in an email to you, at, you guys would have to have the final approved, the warrant question at your August 23rd meeting, and have you voted approved. So we'd have to get moving, tonight if you get language to Phil, to have him write the question, to do, but have a public hearing or not. So then you'd have to set everything up, so that we get it back at the first meeting in August, and then have, so this could have a second public hearing on the 23rd of August, and have it loaded on.
I would have to double check, but I believe, and this is rather odd, the public hearing, I don't think, has to take place until so many days before the election.
Okay, no, you're right, absolutely right. But we got, you got to get it in time to get the warrant question, so it'd have to be the final vote for you guys to finalize the verdict. Give to me to authorize the law with this public speaking. We're gonna, we're gonna ask the town, well, let me rephrase that for a second. If the intention of the council was to put that question to the taxpayers on the November ballot, that's the devil. Now, if you want to do something different, that just calls special town meeting in time, that's like 10 days, 10 days long. So, I mean, you're talking two different words, but if you want to officially put something like that, which we felt in the early conversations back when they first talked to us, that would be the, you know, it's maybe back to about more people coming to it, or, either way, that's the information whatever you choose to.
So if we, at our next meeting, which is August 9th, if we had an agenda item to sort on the amount, the language, that would give us enough lead time for us to get it onto the ballot? So could you guys, could you guys work with Phil over the next couple of weeks to get language, maybe with like a placeholder or a dollar amount?
Like, yeah, you have to move motion tonight to, you know, tell us to do that.
Okay.
So you're gonna do a motion, you have to do a motion tonight, say we support, we want to move the warrant question forward, and have the manager, this is the manager, you know, bring language to the first meeting in August, and propose they want question in the amount of 200 or whatever you want to the, to the council, and then I'll send that to Phil, and we'll get that language back, and I'll have it back to you for the first meeting in August.
Okay, anyone have any concerns with that, or?
The survey closes on August 10th.
Okay.
We'll have.
We won't have results on our schedule.
We're gonna have the electronic part of it, the tabulating.
Rolling.
Right now, I mean, yesterday there was 126 responses, so there'll be more and more and more as it comes in. So everybody who is listening up there, fill out your recent survey, okay? Easy to do. And so, that's, that's a good, I mean, it's not a little uncomfortable, you know, going ahead, spending time and money without feeling at what the, the moment was. And my personal feelings aside, I'd like to know that.
That's, I just have a quick question about like Cal and the letter of intent, and what that works like before. So we sign a letter, we go before we sign a letter of intent, and then?
No, Great Works will submit that, the town would be the co-applicant, but that's only going to the state, and to the state selection process. So they, they will then decide for three projects onto the federal office. And if they select this project to go forward, then you would actually fill out the application, and the town would be the true applicant to that due on October 14th. So this is just like a free letter to tell you, but state gets, each state gets to send in two proposals. This is a much shorter application, it's just four pages, you know, it's federal, it's not much.
I, I think though, the, the grant application, the Cal application is a separate, is, as far as our action goes, is separate from the warrant article. Like, we, we certainly take action, and we would need to vote and agree that we want to be part of the grant, but for the warrant article, it's like a separate thing. There's a little more time, that's it, given when we need to do everything. Okay, so if, are we, do you all want to take this up at our next meeting and make that motion? Or do we want to have, does somebody want to make the motion now for us to at least prepare to make this vote next meeting?
Yeah, I'll, well, model my way to the motion. I'll make the motion that we in support of partnering with Great Works, with the Land Trust, that we ask Tim and staff to
work with.
Right, right, to reach out to legal, to craft the warrant question, and the amount of what, that's what you need to do.
And the amount of, by my, I'd say, to 250,000.
To present to the council at your meeting on August, or is it August 1st? That's what the, that's what the motion should kind of do.
Is it specific to this project? Does it need to be specific to this project, like to the Sam and Falsor project?
Well, that's what it's worth, if you're voting.
I got it. I write a new one.
I'll save it for the discussion.
Can we have a second discussion, and see if you got something?
Yeah, does anybody consider the solution to the worries?
I think part of what would be included in our warrant article is where we would need to specify where that would be coming from. And I think my suggestion is that we offer a, we make this a warrant article, $250,000, fill in the next the language to hold my mind as I think of it. Yeah. So it would not be an increase in taxes or anything, so it would be pulling from.
I think the warrant issue should be.
Yeah, for sure. Any other discussion?
The warrant, yeah, so the update, the warrant question has to reflect the funding, the funding source from the town purchasing land. So we would have to identify the.
So that's why, why, how much, and from where.
Correct, yeah.
Any other discussion?
I think, just like what Jack was saying, I think that the comprehensive plan survey is going to provide some insight. I think that doing this will provide a much bigger section, especially with this November's population that will be coming up to vote, so I think this would be a really good nation gathering.
I think the timing of this works out pretty well, because we're more or less motioning to ask staff to prepare us, and prepare the steps that are needed, so that come our next meeting, we can actually decide and vote. And we should have at least the electronic responses from this survey, that should be directional, I would think, that we can use as part of that decision on the night.
And I think it's encouraging to see the support, and the support that we've gotten in letters too, is.
Agreed.
And so, yeah, it's encouraging to hear how many are in support of this stuff.
All right, we have a motion on table, all those, and any other special part raising?
Well, I think it's reflective of a long history of cooperation between Great Works Regional Land Trust and the town itself growing. And the amount is unprecedented. I think I typed it, well, I have a book, thirty-five thousand. And, uh, so it's, uh, we need all the information, you know, so that we can answer the citizens and be able to, um,
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, uh, say aye. Aye, any of those? Motion that was for zero. So as regards that motion, at our next meeting, we'll be taking up, do we want to move forward putting this item on our ballot? Uh, okay, so we kind of got off track there. So as it relates to the grant applications, to go back there, as I said before, I feel like the approach that we all, that we as a council need to take is sort of a grant by grant basis. So I know that the help grant is the more upcoming one, so perhaps, I don't, I don't know, Tim, if you have some more like specific information around that and like what is needed, what's the application look like, all of that? So maybe at our next, uh, meeting, we can take that up as an agenda item. Um, you know, more or less going, are we willing to be co-applicants for that specific one or not? Uh, and then I think for other future grants, a similar process.
Okay.
Um, as it, as it relates to the, being the owner of a property, I kind of want to discuss that, I mean, I know the insurance is kind of the one effect, I guess, of, of that, right?
And the only other thing I came up with right off is it will be water property that the town will not be able to tax because of what moment.
And you're saying it's water, you're putting out this water because it's like hierarchy value?
One of the, one of the most, I'm assuming.
Yeah, no, yeah, okay. Um, so it's land that we wouldn't be taxing, we wouldn't be paying insurance on it. Um, but the Great Works Regional Land Trust would be willing to maintain the property. Okay.
And part of the, part of the money that's being raised is, uh, product and device for the improvements needed to make accessible by the parking areas, trails, signage, you know, and, uh, maintenance of the property.
And again, that's very specific to the specific grant, like certain grants require that others don't. So if anyone, I just kind of looked at her consensus from the council, I think that this kind of lumps into the process that I proposed for the grants of, as a grant comes up that you all would like to apply for, let's bring it to the council, we can have it as an agenda item, talk about it, make sure we understand what that means. Did it, does that require us to be owners of the property and take it up on a grant by grant basis?
Right, so we'll, we'll be doing many grants, but we'll only come to you if you are required to be, you, uh, the ownership by account or the applicant.
Okay. Great.
I brought this up at previous meeting and as far as this, this project is concerned, I'm most comfortable with the township going towards acquisition of the property.
Okay.
I'm less inclined to be in the, uh, the other, which is somewhat causing, uh, areas of, you know, status loss and stewardship. But that's, I, I think it's stronger case to use time, time funds for the, for the acquisition.
Any other, anyone else have thoughts on that?
I think the land acquisition is the most concrete thing that we have so far in this project.
I would just say that's what the state says, and that's what the federal says. So the hardest part of that money is that money that I can put in the parking lot and the trails. And that's where, you know, I think I have fifty thousand dollars in the town going to provide that public access.
We have resources. We build roads.
Right, right, right.
Probably we build roads, we build parking lots.
Right.
It's something we do.
Okay, so if, if that's fine, and then maybe that's the thing to do is to have the town money go for that and then have to substitute not money.
That's, that's, those are real costs, once you decide, once we decide, if it's twenty-five spaces, spaces, ten spaces, God rail, uh, wherever, wherever those things are, those are things that we can buy for over the vote.
But I am, I have included that in this budget. Because, right, so that is, that's part of, that's why some of the town funds will go in that direction.
What I'm suggesting is that you may, you reallocate those funds out of the, the land trust budget to, uh, to other things.
Because you're, you're saying, because if one of the grants requires us to own the property, then we would be taking on the financial responsibility of parking lots, roads, access, et cetera, as a town, separate from this?
Possibly, I mean, you know, I still have resources to, uh, to build and maintain these other public facilities. And that idea would be if, if the capability is there, we have the room and personnel, that, uh, it, it might be, uh, a better deal than an announcer having to go into the marketplace to hire contractor.
Yeah, agreed that it would be a better deal, but it's not, just because we have resources doesn't mean we can do it without spending any money, obviously, it just might be less.
It's, it's not. You know, I, I know, it's not not spending money, it's spending money in a different way. You know, it's earnest money that is, uh, in, in trade, so to speak.
And that budget is that, that has been proposed, it's a proposed budget, you know, does not count on the town being the owner. As you have said, that we've had some reluctance to be the owner, so that budget is set out as the town not being the owner, the land trust owning the property. So when we're doing this project, we would not have the town's sources from there. So, you know, we are, we're fully funding that, we're trying to fully fund that project. So if we're successful in the fundraising, you know, we're going to be able to put in the parking lot, we're going to be able to put in the trails, we're going to put in the kiosks, we're going to make that publicly accessible. You know, we're going to do that stewardship work on the property, so that's what that budget represents. And if the town does become the owner and resources, like you say, come available, that would of course impact the budget. If you can provide town employees or town trucks or something to help the parking lot and put it in, that's exactly it. You're just going to save money that the town would contribute for another way, so, they, they, we, we work together.
All right, so I think then that particular piece of the allocation of funds, we suggested two hundred and fifty thousand for the, the total amount, but I think probably at our next meeting, we need to kind of make a decision as far as where we stand with the funds actually being allocated, as you suggested.
Don't have, they could simply contribute it to the project, but that's up to you. And the, you know, the other towns that simply, they're going verbiage, they contributed like eighty thousand to purchase, twenty thousand to access.
Yeah.
But God, what, they just did three hundred thousand dollars to the project, so there's no one way of doing it.
Yeah. I, yeah, I sort of struggle with this because if we're, if, if we, town votes, if we move forward and we're expecting to have a ballot, town votes, and we have kind of committed to giving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the project, like, why, it doesn't, we're still getting, it's not like we're giving less money or different money, it's still the same money, regardless of where it's landing, you know? All right, well, we'll chat about that more when we take this up at our next meeting. Um, any other comments or anything? I, I feel like I told you.
If the town is comfortable owning, I suppose, that was one of the questions. Would the town own it either temporarily or did you decide on that? I mean, that's the one question that I'm being asked, would the, would the town consider owning it?
They would have to, same thing, we would have to have, that would be a town vote. We'd have to put that in front of the legislative board.
We have to put that on the ballot? Along with it?
Well, it doesn't have to be, that doesn't have to be, I, I don't know what your deadline is, owning the property, transferring it to us, once you purchase it, all of us. But the town can, the taxpayers have to accept that property, so we have to put that question in front of them. So ideally, I guess, that would probably make sense that it would seem to me you'd want to put the same question out there because, you know, we invest two hundred and fifty thousand in the project and then the taxpayers turn around, don't, don't approve the purchase of it, but don't approve the land transfer or the ownership of it. Are you, is it, so it would be donated to us or would it be, I see if it is, it's still, I'd be accepting by taxes, I don't know. So.
So you're saying, Tim, that it might make sense for us to have two ballot questions, one addressing the, the funds, the dollars, and then a separate one addressing the acceptance of the property? And then that would answer your question.
I would do, I would do both the same.
What?
I would make it the same question. To accept and to accept ownership. We, we wouldn't obligate, you don't want to be necessarily obligated to be the owner, if you don't want to be, like you were just saying, you know, it, it might be that maybe the funds requiring you to be owner doesn't come forward and then, and then you would, you would still have the op, you could still have the opportunity to own it if you wanted to, but you wouldn't have to own it, but if, if you get like four, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from the federal government, they're not going to give it to you. They're not going to give it to the land trust, they are going to give it to you, and then you would have to own the property. They want a town, a municipal owner. It's just, it's much more in their comfort zone than a, you know, regional land. So I would, we have the same question.
Everybody else?
Then, then, then we don't put that in forever. Is that what I'm just saying?
Well, I think as it relates to the ownership of the land is some grants may require that, but I think in order for you all to move forward on a particular grant that requires that, it would he need to, it, who you to know where we stand, where the town.
Yeah, and I think to actually make that decision in November, warrant, which applies because even if we go ahead and apply for the help grant and we get invited for a proposal, put in October fourteenth, we submit that proposal on fourteen, we would say, you know, that the town would be, at that point, the town, we're saying the town would be the owner. And then it would go to the ballot and the results of that ballot issue, we determine whether the town would be the owner or not. So supposedly we went through it all and the town voted no, they didn't want to be the owner, well then we simply wouldn't receive the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. You know, that's, that's how that would work, but we could still do the progression, have the vote of, on the warrant article in November to accept the town land, like Tim said, I mean, that would, that would work out. We could still apply for the money, they just won't give us the money. And so, you know, that those guidelines that they have are fulfilled, so we can sort of continue to apply and continue to work in that line. Uh, they just won't release the grant until their grant is done.
So I guess my concern, if we lump them together in one question, then, you know, then, then that sort of kills, because I, I think it, it sounds like there's a scenario where, you know, well, there's always a scenario where you all are looking for funding, right? And so, but then the, the town ownership, it sounds like is maybe a little iffy at this point. And so I wouldn't want, I would worry about lumping them together and in the event, like, it was voted down, but maybe only for part of it, but then they're both off the table at that point.
Okay.
I don't know.
And where, if, the reason in my line asking a question is to get a raise. I, I'm not, I'm not asking a question so I can get the answer I want to hear, I'm asking a question so I can find the information. Um, if we lumped it into one, we're asking the question, are you willing to spend the money? To, you know, for the town to spend the money and then potentially the town to own that property, which at the end of the day is the biggest ask that's going to come our way. Um, and so, let's say that really could happen, like with this, the, is it with the, the help one? Like, that's what, that's what being asked of us is two hundred and fifty thousand and ownership. I think that's a valid question to ask to the voters. And if they say, we're, I'm going for two fifty, but not to ownership, so that money's up, I, I don't know, I, I see your point. You can get the two fifty, but not the ownership, and I just don't know how much it muddies it up there and, you know.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's, I see your point.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Hi, um, right, Kristo, one minute, Bible field. And, you know, the ask of ownership of two hundred thousand dollars from residents of the town, is there a way to inject in that warrant article an understanding that if you become owners and if you provide two hundred and fifty thousand dollars funding, it opens up the things that Tim has been talking about, because how is it that the public becomes aware that there's three quarters of a million dollars up here if these two things are done together?
I think that comes to the graphic that's like, you folks, to add to the question.
Well, my, I guess what concerns, you know, can you and everybody here, which everybody in the community would like to be aware of that? Or is the warrant article say, hey, this is what the potential is? And it's, so it's not just the residents of the town and I know two hundred thousand, that's what they call a hook. Or they see that seed money for these other entities, especially federal entities, to be able to fund this and we all.
Barbara, we had someone to add.
The question could just be worded somewhat like the state questions are. Would you want to raise and appropriate so much leveraging the possibility of so much funds from other sources, like some of the state questions?
You're sort of, you're referring to any bonds?
Yeah.
Okay. Can, can a warrant article look like the bond?
It could all the time.
Okay.
Yes, are you doing something?
Let me just say the same thing.
Okay. But, uh, Rebecca, I'm very old, the field's road. I think that what Carrington say is that for the help grant specifically, town ownership would be a requirement, but town funds would not. So for me, I would prefer to see them separate because it may be that the residents are fine with having the town own the property, but they're not fine with two hundred and fifty. And that scenario wouldn't prevent us from getting the grant, but if we combine them and people voted no because of the money, that would prevent us from owning the land. And that, I have, I have a concern that, I personally think that most residents are not as well versed in um, what ownership means, that they may be like, sure, if we have a town forest, why can't we have this? But they may ball that as a number, um, and I would hate to see the chances to get the grant ruined because of the money that although great and showing support for the project is not a requirement for that grant or potentially any others, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, go ahead, Brett, and you can.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, Brett.
I'll be, uh, thirty-four over to you, Steve. So my question is, I guess, can we get more specifics on what the land use will look like for residents under different brands? So like, depending on what brand it is, there may be certain restrictions on how the land could be used for residents or potentially a mock-up of what it will look like? Because as a taxpayer, I would want to see, well, if we're putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for something, I want to know what we're getting back. So, you know, whether my wood trails, where those trails go through, uh, how many parking spots? I think parking spots could be important too, because I think with, um, like with long woods, there's limited parking there. Um, and some of the other, um, Great Works sites as well. So I would just want to know a little bit more details as far as, um, what the site will look like under different scenarios.
So just, just on that point, I think wh, I mean, whatever information we can get from Phil as far as like how, how detailed and stuff we can how, how much detail like has been included in the warrant article, I know there's some limitations, but then also I think like to your point, you know, when you think about, um, every election cycle, when we have various ballots at state level, you know, there's, there's groups that organize to like communicate to people like what this means and what comes along with it. And I, I, I think that we'll probably, I, I would guess that we'll probably find that we can't put in number parking space that are in the warrant article, but I would definitely say that like the Great, Great Works Land Trust, like of course with the elements and responsibility will really be in you, I think to, to get the word out of like, what does this mean, go vote for it, you know, follow that. If.
Sandy, I agree, this is Emery's virtue road. Um, am I understanding correctly that if the two hundred and fifty thousand comes out of unrestricted funds, it will not cause the taxpayer an increase in taxes?
Yes, and so.
That should be, I think, in the question because people.
Oh, yeah, that, that would have to be the question.
Okay.
But we gotta put the funding form here.
Yes.
So listening to conversations, hypothetically, Tim, I gotta ask you a question. Does the two hundred and fifty, does us getting the land depend on the two hundred and fifty thousand? Not necessarily, okay. Is your answer, you're gonna have two separate one questions, because you're talking now about.
Not necessarily. Okay. Is your answer, you're gonna have two separate one questions because you're talking now about two different things, you know? If it was to purchase the land for the two hundred fifty thousand, that's a warrant question. If the two hundred fifty thousand to fund a land project. Green green space, whatever, of land conservation, that's a warrant question. The second warrant question is then the taxpayer will need to decide. If at some time due to grants or whatever, the the conservation commission or the landowners want to give the land to the town or the town accept. Two separate warrant questions. So that's what we're gonna ask Bill.
Okay.
I'm thinking about it now that was here. In in order to transference to the taxpayer, it's got to be completely separate. If you're doing two separate things with. They're not the same, not tied together. They are.
We're not necessarily fighting for thirty thousand dollars to own the land.
To own the land.
We're contributing to our.
So then you're asking the taxpayer, it's two different things.
Yeah, okay. Um, so given that, Tim, um, is our previous motion sufficient to?
For that, for that one, but then you're in your second one, if you're gonna do your second one question for that.
The land ownership.
If if given the the opportunity for grants with the town accept the donation of land. Blah blah blah, whatever, or something like that.
Okay, okay. My, yes.
A motion to authorize the town manager to work with legal to draft language. With a November ballot to, um, put the San Falls River project under town ownership pursuant to grant funding with the Brideworks Regional Land Trust.
That works.
Same, same.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed, as far as here. You want to pass, you have a comment?
Oh, I did. I thought, I think that they covered that important for. Uh, residents to understand that. I think those if you prepare owns something, they're going to take something for it. And so if you write it like we just did. Then that clarifies that there isn't this money that has to come forward at some point to own it. And contingent on the funds that are raised for the land trust to give the property to the town.
Alright, um. Tim, I know we sort of like hijacked your presentation a little bit. And did you have anything else you wanted to add or bring up?
No, that was exactly what I was hoping to add.
Okay. Alright, so to summarize where we landed on all of this, um, as it relates to specific grant applications, we'll manage those on a grant by grant basis. Um, we have things in the works to move forward to get a warrant article, potentially get a warrant article on the ballot addressing the contribution of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We also have things in the works to, um, potentially add a warrant article addressing the ownership of property next to town or of that. And that, I think, covers your, your needs.
You see this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I need to throw the same water. Any idea how much the tax revenue will really buy this, sell those properties?
I was just hearing those numbers. So if this is the assessed value of that one point nine million dollars, it would be about thirty thousand dollars in the current.
I can throw up the this.
But that's not the current tax assessment because the property is in tree growth. So it would have a fraction.
So would it be coming, would it come out of tree growth?
So we own, we were sold it, we would keep it in tree growth and of course the town owned it. To be, so the national tax loss would be, I think, considerably less than that.
It would be in tree growth, yes. Yeah, that would make a big difference.
Was that twenty five percent?
I don't know.
Yeah. Our space could get us, but it would be in the tax, right? Yes. Alright, Brett?
Um, if the land were sold, um, what would be the development restrictions in terms of zoning and whatnot? So I would. Say if ours is go no, and then the developer bought it, what would that look like in terms of development on that land? I know it's a sort of a broad question, but I would just.
I mean, it will be developed. They are selling the land and they they are not opposed to development on that property.
One of the parcels has a one house deed restriction.
Okay.
But that is only, but that unfortunately, that only is only due to the right of way.
Correct.
And so if these three properties get purchased by a developer, that right away, then restriction would disappear.
You're becoming a real.
It could become like any real, unfortunately. So.
Cause I would root something I think is, I would want to know is, I don't know, this is what it looks like if a developer comes in and then this is. You know, the protections that are in place in terms of zoning or shoreline or whatever else.
Did I, true?
I believe so. Yeah.
I didn't look up for our three is two two development that's based on the.
I think just to kind of keep us moving on, I think all of these questions are are really great and things to for sure, make sure we're considering and putting out there and stuff when, if and when it gets to the point where we're voting. Um, you know, information sessions, whatever, I think would be great. Um, certainly can address all of this in a warrant article, but great questions.
We have the public hearing. It would be, it would be a public hearing. And what I, what I do with that particular point and get all the thin that. Have them preempt all these, many of these questions, possibly put a public hearing and get it over.
Good point. Big session. Anything else on this topic?
Um, maybe someone related. I've heard that, um, some of the neighboring towns, the other two boroughs charge impact fees for developers. I don't fully know all the details, but something like they, um, charge a developer, puts up. Uh, four bedroom house. For every bedroom, the town gets a thousand dollars and. I I know South Borough doesn't, but I guess the other two boroughs do, and that's they, that money is then allocated to, um. Buying open space like this and also for recreational fields and things like that. I mean, I'm just suggesting. Like something to consider, it's very recommended.
Okay.
Alright, I think we can wrap up this topic. I don't know if that's okay. Um, thank you so much, Tim, and everybody else who came in tonight to speak about this. We appreciate your input.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the time.
Yeah. Alright, um, public comments, um, sorry, on the phone or in the room or resident, they would like to speak about, so it's not on our agenda later. It's not on our agenda later?
Right, no.
Alright, go ahead, Cliff.
This YouTube video channel the town has is fantastic.
Good.
But there is a little drawback. If anyone is listening to it lately, this room is echoing something awful. And there's only a couple of ways to do it. It's just some person here drawing ceilings. Blocking off the walls, or you can say this, then the council chair is back upstairs. Because if you listen, have you, anyone listened to this? Is it clear? In yourself.
But I saw the replies.
We, yeah, we have, and I was on Zoom meeting initially before the carpet was put in and I think it improved a little bit. Um, I think us turning on the air conditioner hopefully will work, but I think it probably would be worth exploring. I don't know, whatever else, like drop ceiling, something like that, just to see what what else we can do.
The only thing there is.
We've heard this from many people.
If the town does go through a new building, that's money. Gone.
Yeah.
I just, you know, I just, because it's excellent.
Good.
And one other question though, the planning board. Are they having meetings with, they are?
Yeah, there are. Those meetings are posted on the YouTube channel as well. There's like, w- within our YouTube page, there's like two channels, they call it. Um, there's a town council and a land or one or several.
Cause I went looking for those and I couldn't find anything, but audio planning board meetings.
Yeah, there's, there's some.
Yeah, they should be there.
I guess that's one of my stuffs.
The the last thing, they had an audio problem here. It wasn't, it it was hungry and it didn't pick up the audio. But it just was a, it was a glitch in the computer system somewhere.
But that is excellent. That is.
So, yeah, yeah, I like, so for very little money, hundred and fifty bucks, we bought it some. Sound panels for this room, those are on the walls, we're gonna try that next.
Great.
Uh, if not, the only other option is to move this up to the, um, the gymnasium upstairs.
Okay. Right, but let's keep kind of iterating and see what improvement can be made and stuff and keep the feedback coming for everyone in the ballot of what's working and what's not. Audrey?
Audrey Ford, you're rodeo, rodeo conjunction, which what Cliff was saying. It's been a while since I've been interested in what the town is doing and I, on the present website, it says go to. Town Hall Streets, and of course, that's a jet in. And if he hadn't told me about YouTube, I wouldn't have known. And I, I. I'm finding one either, so that's just the two of us. So I know.
They're right on top of each other. The first one's town council and the second one is planning board.
Is that, when you go to welcome to South Borough, you're.
So, so sorry, sorry, I haven't interrupted you. So Jen is answering Cliff's question about others. On the actual YouTube channel, there's town council and find where. But to your point, if our website is still pointing people to Town Hall Streets, that's something we need to address. We need to point them to the YouTube channel and stuff.
In addition to everything else you go to.
That that I think is an easy, an easy fix, hopefully. Um, thank you for pointing that out. Um, can you guys take care of that in the next little bit?
Sure.
Awesome.
Once, once the recordings, all you have to do is go to the council page and it says click here and it takes you directly to YouTube.
Same thing on that.
One other quick thing, on the comprehensive plan. Uh, is that out online or?
Same place as the other two ones. I just spoke to you one today.
Okay, I guess I want the general public, if they listen to this at all, to be terrific. The days of the newspapers, you know, back in the nineties and stuff. We filled the chambers.
There's a little feedback what Barbara just said. I have found it, but it wasn't, I was looking at that. I'm not, I'm not on the people very often. And I go on and all Town Hall Streets, that's still on the front page, so probably if you gotten rid of that Town Hall Streets, it would be a good thing.
Yeah, well, we're updating the update.
Sure.
Now, it's, it's in our revamp mode. Uh, it's just gonna take about eight months to do it. We're in about month four. So we are rebuilding that. Uh, it's just one of the great benefits that previous administration left me here to do. So trying to get it all done as fast as we possibly can.
I have a point.
No, no, I know. It's just, and I'm not, I don't know, this is all I'm working on. We're trying to get it all done.
But I think given the the timeline that we still have ahead of us, the website, it's a big huge project, um, you know, swapping out the links and the website to point us to YouTube versus, um, Town Hall Streets, I think it would maybe. Relatively change for it, but for us, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just start looking? Uh, the Sentinel goes to everybody in this area. I wonder if we'll put it in there about how to get the comments one hand solo. A lot of people in here are not gonna hear a thing about it.
Contact?
Yeah.
It's been, uh, we're gonna readvertise someone for this for.
What, the intersection?
Four twelve.
Yes.
Yes.
In seven?
Yeah, something would already in there.
All that.
The fifteen, it was on the fifteenth, uh, July fifteenth edition of Sentinel and then will probably be advertised for.
I'll stay there. I missed it, but I'm glad to see it.
Does she have something on that? Oh, I'm sorry. No, never mind. Pat, she has one? Um, Bill, uh, you ever got hand raised on Zoom?
Yes, hi, Bill Cole, uh, Tamarack Drive. I just had a question about whether or not there was, um, a plan or any concern about the parking on Agamanticus Road. Across from the softball fields at Hussey Field. I know that there's a, um. Like a handicap parking spot there, but then there's a couple no parking signs, but it seems like that side of the road, as you're driving back into town on, on Aggie Drive. Or Agamanticus Road on the right, um, a lot of people end up parking over there and it's a little bit worrying driving because you're turning left off of, um. Willow Drive there in the sun, especially like in the evening, the sun can come right down there and it's hard to see. And then there's cars on the right, people driving back on the left. And, um, I was just wondering if there was any plan to, to try to deal with people parking on that side of the road. I know traffic, um, people end up parking over across on that side of the street. By Aggies and I know that that's a different situation. There's, um, the the business there, but there's plenty of parking, I think. At the fields and then people, they end up parking where they're not supposed to and it just kind of creates a situation that's a little bit, uh. A little bit hazardous, I would say.
I think, thank you for bringing this to us, Bill. I drive that way often. I know about the way you're talking about. I think this is something we can have taken into consideration and.
Yeah, I'll ask, please control an area better when there's, you know, if there's something going on, but. Short of that, council would have to put, approve no parking signs. They would, they'd have to adopt the new ordinance to work out. And then you'd have to put up, you know, no parking signs on the side of the road or something and change the ordinance and so it could be enforced, so.
I know too, Tim, at some point, um, let me know if I'm making this up, but I feel like some of what we sort of talked about maybe is a potential future project to, to take down, um. The red barn thing right there and it could create some more parking.
Yeah.
Um, it's like a potential future project. Is that something that?
We've talked about it, we've done it, you know, like all brown or.
Okay. Okay, so thank you for, yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I I think, um, as Tim had mentioned about the no parking signs, there are multiple no parking signs on that side of the street. Um, but there are a couple, maybe it might be two, um. Handicap parking spots there as well, but I I think the no parking signs don't seem to be working at this point. And that's the last comment I have. Thank you.
And I will, I will pass it on to the issue. Barbara, do you know those no parking signs were authorized or we just put up?
I do not know right now.
No, it's pressing, we'll have to check. We've seen that that tendency, but sometimes on bold, we won't offer it, we'll check it.
Okay. Any other public comments or anybody? Okay, town manager's report, Tim.
Highway roadside movement continues. The old thriving was completed this past weekend. Um, by the way. For the new budget, they're getting new work uniforms. Um, the way it was set up in the past where they, they get the uniforms, they take them and they get a washing cycle within the company. They don't take them home, so they don't take. Dern, grime and pesticides and bad things home. Police department in the last two weeks has had six arrests. Five accidents, eighty two traffic stops. Uh, two new police cruisers have been ordered. They're gonna be black in color, uh, with new graphics lines. They'll probably won't be delivered till, be available for delivery till December, January. The police department's participating in National I O, which is August second, five J P M and Law World Soccer Field with York. They're partnering with York and Advanced Police this year. They'll be there as well. By appointment, in the last two weeks, have had fifteen calls. Uh. Planning has been doing work with Southern East Stormwater Working Group, uh, to, we've got the annual report, the annual permit. Fordation with S M P D C on, he's working on the, uh, L G two thousand three presentation to the board. We've been working on soul ordinance, the patent subdivision, finding the facts. Uh. She's been working on footprint research for the cannabis permitting licensing ordinance review. She did an engineering meeting for a five lot, pretty yellow road subdivision. L D two thousand three review, research on legislative wooden sacks, and we're organizing and updating a lot of procedures. Library, we've been training for the new software they got, which is better accurate for wanting out books and materials. Uh, tracking the people and so forth. Uh, we've had some failure of like the gutters on the library, they're failing damage. Basically caused by small tree growth, we're getting close to repair those. The testing dialogue went well. Maureen from the library was one of the ones that attendance. Uh, to represent the library. Recreation, the A C unit, uh, one of the A C three U A C units is broken at community center. It's going to be nine thousand dollars. And we're in the process of getting that done. We're using four A C units from upstairs at this time. Uh. While Nikki was on vacation, her assistant won't invite COVID, so. A bunch of the volunteers stepped up and kept all programs running smoothly. We want to say thank you to them. Only two weeks left in summer camp. This year, the transportation driver was invited to join in all the activities instead of waiting on the bus. Transportation company reached out with a big thank you to Nikki, the, and said they really appreciated, um, the bus rider apparently close to, you know, probably Jack's. the bus driver apparently close to, you know, probably Jack's age, hasn't been dressed up as a fairy princess in years, so he's pretty excited about that. That's hard, explaining that, just everything. Uh, seniors, soccer registration is next week. The seniors, uh, Wednesday they're having a flamingo potty luncheon. Um, the lead uh, person to, is gonna open the luncheon and do their presentation is Jack with his pink flamingo costumes. We'll see you there, Jack.
Yeah.
Uh, no, we're gonna have, Wednesday they're having a flamingo potty luncheon. Activity is gonna slow down for the month of August and will pick back up in September. We're assessing, Vern is continuing to finalize and work with sales analysis. Um, I have a meeting Thursday morning with staff and Vern. We're gonna all put our heads together and two are at on having a discussion on presenting the proposed mill rate to the council. We had, we were anticipating at the first meeting in August, but we ended up in the second meeting in August. We're still trying to get this stuff together. I'll let you know, we still have plenty of opportunity and time to get that done. If you, if you have the uh, the section of the meeting then and approve the mill rate, we still have plenty of time getting tax bills out before the first payment due at the end of September. I have a workshop on that, Tim.
What's that?
Do you have a workshop on that?
As far as?
The options on overlay and the mill rate, though.
Well, that'll be, we'll have a meeting on it. We'll present it to you. Yes.
Yeah. Right, but in the past, we've always had a eight or twelve various mill rates with corresponding overlays.
Yeah, we'll do that in the meeting. Yeah. Yeah, we'll have all that for the meeting.
Okay.
We'll do that, and you'll have a board of assessors, that was gonna.
Yeah.
You'll have a board of assessment meeting and we'll get you that information and we'll assess it. Unless you wanna have a separate workshop on that.
I know, but it's, it's, it always has, it's been some conversation in the past.
Yeah, that, that would be the.
These are, these are not easy things for prisons of average and trouble to understand.
Right. Not easy for us, I think, trust me. That's why we have a staff meeting on Thursday. Ian was a child last week. Laura was on vacation and he wanted to add Laura. She kept the office well in shape.
She did a great job. There were no dead bodies on the floor.
Dan, at the transfer station, Dan saw us and he's asked us to, he said he has seen a new dust stick this summer in outer stages. And he can't account for them. And he asked us to present to you to consider going back potentially either stickers or window hangers for residents only. If it's not a regional facility, it's, I, I believe it's a residential facility for the town itself, though. Our hauling transportation fee will level twenty percent. Um, the cost of bags, you know, we need to, that's on the agenda. And I took a look at that. Our rates are substantially lower than every other place. So at some point, we'll be talking about that. I guess we need to have that discussion when shit goes on, sorry about that. A lot of other places I started doing research, a lot of other places around have stickers, uh, stickers, tags or some form of identification. So that it's not, you know, and, and they're telling me, Dan's telling me, he said he knows, he sees people he knows from France who are coming over. He sees guys who are in the country place. That all impacts us obviously by our hauling fees. So and it's transportation is getting really, really, very expensive to run, so he, he asked to bring it up to them. He says he sees a lot of, a lot of state financial license. Well, it'd be probably a, an agenda, should be an agenda, right? We can talk about, at, at least have that discussion. Um, what are your plans?
Oh, what? Um, we're taking in the tax club applications, uh, to be accepted and processed. Um, I'm diligently doing year end account reconciliation, all kinds of, if I'm counting year ends. Um, the other thing that we're doing is a change of the September tax bill. Let's hand up for that. The top page is what it looks like currently. What is highlighted in blue, we are, wanna change to what you'll see in color on the next page. So these are old last year numbers, uh, but it will clearly show in the pie chart how much is going to the school, the county, and the municipal. I think it will show a lot easier to the average person being in the color pie chart than just showing it in an American text form. That was Tim's idea.
Oh, certainly a lot clearer. It says the same stuff for.
Yes.
Well, right. And what was, what we found, another half I've done this, is that, you know, people in a hurry, you get home, you open your mail, you see Jack, oh yeah, okay. You know, I know I gotta pay that, I go to the bill pile. People don't look at it, but all of a sudden they see that picture and it's all, I mean, look at that. Are you kidding me? That's really what that, really? Because it seemed that it read and it's an intention, so.
Check that out.
We just wanted to, the transparency was much easier to work with when people see that. You know? So a lot of people, when you read through all of, all the gerbers and the bigger people, I go, whatever. That is my taxes going on. Now they can look at it and go, wow. And a lot of people can do, we'll take last year's, this year's, their, so that's one of the.
The difference in printing costs like normal, and very, very dollar. Just when we're just going just that one sentence, everything else is black and white. Just about, let's say, go on the page. Uh, that's on like Z one, I'm, and on my.
Uh, so grabbing, on Thursday, we have three, three interviews for the economic developer positions. We'll be doing that. Uh, Joe Chutresal and Mark Leach's, Assistant Chief Leach's last day this Friday is after forty-nine, forty-seven years in service and by the time, uh, at noon time, they'll be doing a little ceremony where you'll be signing off the vehicle last time and taking them all on fire truck. Um, you want to talk about the senator thing?
Oh, I got a call today from Mike Lawrence's office, from the senator's office. And he asked how long Joe and Mark had been working for the town and the fire department because they want to send a letter of recognition to them. So that's great.
Uh, we met with Mike Glassell last week and I continue the work on the Town Hall project, uh, options and research, locations, different, all the different aspects, many new pieces, but it's a standard-based movement going on. Uh, as I said, we've ordered wall hangings for the room to help with the echo. Um, meeting Thursday with the local animals regarding contracts, staffing issues we're having. Staffing issues that potentially could and have that critical. It's time to sit down with the local animals and have a discussion with them. So that'll be coming forward. Tomorrow, two P M, we'll be with M B O T about the road transfers in Maine. So for those of you who are planning on attending, Jack, yeah.
I, I have a work conference.
Okay.
But if you could please have them give the summary.
Well, I'm gonna present it to the council. I gotta, you guys gotta approve it anyway. I'm gonna present it to you.
But whatever information.
Yeah.
I'd like to see what their
Yep.
whereabouts and vehiculars are.
You're a real, it'll be wonderful. And, and what, for what, everybody, if you don't know, so the state's proposing because of urban development, transferring roads back, uh, state roads back, that's what that is. They're gonna tell us what their phenomenal plan is tomorrow. Uh, postage machi, post, postage machine has died. We believe it had eagles, bears, if we know this. Um, we have a new one on the way. We really need a postal machine as we can sense that well. Uh, Jay and myself did, did an inspection on Liberty Brattle Street. Um, I also was over on Cooper Sands Road on the driveway with a complaint of raw water runoff on the side of the road, that thing. Then he called us and plugged over there, so I've been over there with Jay looking at that. Uh, last Sunday, we had a community dinner with the testy group, testy group. We were there, seemed to give it time. And we saw the law presentation we have there, recognized testy of the city. I am in receipt of a old petition from Liberty Street residents who have submitted a petition to, they originally submitted it to Perry, they submitted it to me and I doing a couple more things and I'll probably put it in front of you and for the first meeting in August. It's a petition to limit the size of vehicles on Liberty Street. We just put in a speed bump, so I wanted to take a little, a few times, if these bumps can have an impact to work. Um, the speed cable, I guess it's not speed, speed cable. But if, what they've asked is, they've asked that what is the size of the vehicles that go up and down Liberty Street? Uh, minus the trucks that go to the water station. Okay. L D two ninety. Uh, there is a bill that passed by, and I hope that Tiffany will jump in. The legislature passed a factory leak bill. It's an act of stabilized property taxes that is the goal. Fifty-five years of age are older than one on Homestead for at least ten years. Uh, and they passed it very quietly, went through it like everything else. Um, and on its cover of face value, it doesn't seem like a bad idea. So how this works is this, if you own your home for ten years, you're sixty-five years older, you can apply for this. Um, it's called a tax stabilization. What happens is the state then takes your rate, whatever your, the last assessed value was, and freezes it. And then with the idea that some months later, the state will reimburse the municipality just like they do Homestead extension. They'll, they'll do that. So a couple things. There's no income requirements on this. So this could be wealthy or poor. Doesn't matter, number one. Um, municipalities are kind of like, this is probably gonna be some kind of a nightmare for a hooky to process for child taking interest if somebody takes this. So who's gonna pay the interest on, when they don't pay their full tax amount for the first payment? The interest to be paid if they don't, when they, when the state finally does get around paying. So there's that. There's M N A did not support this bill, nor does the mean man. And there's a couple other things that are resisting. So how this is gonna work is municipalities have a stabilized property tax, and eligible individual under this chapter may recover from the state. May, may is the key word in this phrase, may recover from the state one hundred percent of the amount by which the property tax assessed. And then they just, the new assessment every year, they have to apply every year for the new assessment above beyond what was frozen would be funded by the state at a hundred percent. So this says, may, the word may, not shall. The issues that come up is one of the issues that ring out in the home is that legislature has set aside two million to fully reimburse cities and towns for over the loss by cruising property taxes. If everybody in the state does this, that two million probably won't work out. But under the law, the reimbursement rate could drop to fifty percent. So the next time we have a governor's change and the state's shorting money, just like revenue sharing, what do you think's an animal of this? And when that happens, if there's no guarantee, the future legislature is gonna find a full amount. If the future legislature reverses the fifty percent minimum, the costs associated with the lost property tax revenues will gonna be shifted to the younger homeowners and businesses. You'll have the, the loss of that additional revenue. And then eligibility for property tax controls is not based on income or network, is strictly based on your age of sixty-five and apply. Uh, a lot of questions on this, maybe Tiffany can jump in. Um, so I'm just, there's not a lot at this particular point we can do. We're gonna try to see. There are, I've already saw places where town are talking about filing appeals on this and making other changes. But again, another law, I'm, I, the intent is good. Blanket policies, uh, you know, this works well until the year five, just like state revenue. And you get a legislature, money's tight, and they decide to fund it only thirty percent of the lost home. And if we had a lot of elderly people apply, we're gonna lose more tax money.
Or the same problem that we get when we effectively devalue the tenant.
Correct.
Gets shifted to other property tax items.
Yeah.
And it's.
So maybe Tiffany can, she may, she, Tiffany and I taught. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm trying to get more educated on this because it's kind of stuck up on our radar. Real quick, I'd ask, I'd ask Tiffany to see.
Yeah, Tiffany, President Roberts.
I thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm not sure what more I can add to the conversation. I, I did speak with Tim at length. Um, requesting what the questions and concerns are from the municipality. So as of right now, um, Main Revenue Service will be putting out guidance around this law on August eighth, which ironically is um, when it goes into law. Um, I'm just gonna be frank, it's a bad bill. Um, I don't know how it got through. It, it kind of just slipped under the radar. Um, the intent there was good in trying to help our seniors, but the execution of it has a lot to be desired. So basically, you know, Jen or Tim, if you can get me something in writing that I can send to, to, to M R S. I know the representative Myers is doing the same for Elliot. Representative Matheson is doing the same for Kittery. So hopes is let's inundate them with questions and concerns. And I believe there are other parties that are looking at the constitutionality of this as far as equal taxation. If there's any questions, I can try to answer them. But again, this, this just came up on my radar about a week and a half ago. There's an article in the B D N, if anyone wants to look at that as well.
Madam Chair. I'll be brief. Thank you, Representative Roberts. I had enough to hear. With the legislature and the government, maybe. We're, we're breaking our backs trying to just simply maintain an even keel. Not have a sawtooth career with our undesigned funding, all the things we're we're trying to be balanced and we end up getting mandates that just throw absolute wrenches. And uh, if it's any concern for anybody in the legislature, why people leaving town administration, this is an example. We're making these people's job incredibly harder and not easy.
Madam Chair, for me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, and uh, Mr. Craig, I guess I understand your concern. Um, just for the councils and, and Tim and Jen's information, this was not even voted on in the House and Senate. It came out of committee unanimously, out of the taxation committee and went under the hammer. Um, we don't know why. Uh, we've been having conversations with our colleagues on the taxation committee, but those will remain um, private. Um, but this wasn't even something that came to a vote for us.
And she had two hundred years, two hundred and fifty years, but they threw, they opened team through, it was a Boston team. And Boston Harbor for taxation without representation. And, and I agree, I, I applaud Jack's sentiments. It's, it's very difficult for us because at every turn, we're trying to, within pennies of a dollar every year, maintain the budget so that it's it's consistent for the taxpayer, so they have an honest and true value to know what's coming, but we can't. We can't when, you know, I get, we get these bills out of nowhere and all of a sudden we're and, and, you know, it may, it may work fine the first year, but how do they pass, continuously pass bills without first asking questions and asking municipalities, how will this work for you? And showing us programs and showing us, we as, we as management of the town, before we pass an ordinance, before we pass regulations or budgets, we have public hearings, we provide, we parent, put stuff out, public, excuse me, half people. And then it just seems from time to, and again, I'm just beating God from, it's just very frustrating for us. It is. We try to be conservative with the taxpayer, but it is, every time you turn around, taxpayer states another hit. The school system, they went up fifty, a hundred percent from what they told us, what we projected. A hundred percent is. How do I, what do I say? Nothing I can. And now they want to fund this bill and they say, well, may. Nothing I can, and now they want to fund this bill, and they say, well, may, oh, that one word, may, not shall, but may. And I guarantee, look at state revenue sharing, what do you think will happen the next time we're in a recession? That they're talking about coming, well, how do you think this will get funded? Oh, well, we'll fund that, they defund the schools, defund, and, and then what will be left? The young people who are trying to make a living here, they're trying to survive there, will end up having to pay more in a tax, and we'll go, okay. LD 290. And that's my. Management report for this week, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, on our unfinished business number one and number two, uh, we have a workshop scheduled for next Tuesday, August second, at six thirty. Um, to meet the, uh, sorry, be planning work, workshop, be planning work on the council to address these two items. Um, so I think we can, there's no action really to take up on these two for the evening. Uh, so we'll move on to new business number one, possible action on the ordinance to extend our solar farm moratorium. Uh, I will go ahead, I'll, I'll, what I offer, motion to, um, extend the moratorium on commercial solar energy facilities. For an additional one hundred eighty days, beginning. What's?
September.
Thank you, beginning of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Sorry. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor, or any discussion, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion pass four zero, thank you. New business number two, uh, I'm going to the Conservation Commission. Um, so earlier this evening, Executive Section, we interviewed Brett Croft, um, to buy for the Conservation Committees.
Just looking at the, uh, sure. I've got a review. Okay, um, Speaker, I, uh. To appoint, uh, Mr. Croft, uh, for the Conservation Commission, determined June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Second.
We have a motion in a second and discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion pass four zero, Brett, thank you, and their service, thank you both for applying. Uh, all right, number three, we have York County Hazard Mitigation Plan update to adopt a resolution. Uh, this is something we do annually, right?
No, we, we, we just thumbs up about once every five years, the federal scheme requires an upgrade. Um, in York County after right decorating the plan, we participate in that, we do in our section. And then, and once York County gets approved through a teamer, all the communities have to adopt that new plan, so. This one, this adoption was, I think, the last option, two thousand. This update, so it comes about every five years, but it's just basically that, it's just, we need to adopt, we need to adopt this, that they have a mitigation plan for us to receive. Has a mitigation funding in event of a disaster, so.
Just looking at the, the language we're, we're stating, I wonder what.
No, 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 no. You just, you just have to take an adoption, just, just, uh, just to adopt, uh, uh, just to adopt the York County Hazard Mitigation Plan, so you're ready to do.
I would move to adopt the two thousand twenty-two York County Hazard Mitigation Plan, as I already said.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, all right. Uh, up next, new business number four, updated transfer station fee proposal.
Um, I'm gonna, that's what we have, she's the manual, so.
Yes, what we did is we took surrounding towns, where we're North Borough, Elliot Wells, as comparisons. Um, their price sheets are not identical to ours, so we did the best we could with apples to apples. And on the far right is the recommended increase, not everything is increasing, only some things. And to keep us more in line with surrounding towns. Uh, the bag prices won't go up, we will still be the cheapest around. But we, in light of what Dan's been, what we're saying, that the transfer station, we thought that might help the situation as well.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting on this price structure, yeah, number one, as Tim pointed out before, people are incredibly able to sniff up. You know, drive five miles, you know, there'd be the oxygen bills, you know, it's a rule, well, they do the same thing with, uh, with something like a trash bag. And, so I, I would be in favor of mimicking whatever the local communities have around us. Um, but there is a downside to it, and we've seen it in the past, whereas if the fees go up too high. In, big like bulky goods, it's a sure way, and I've run around the cleanups, uh, to go out onto the back roads. And find TV sets and mattresses and microwaves, the, because people will be efficient that way too. So, that's, that's the balance that I think we just, we have the council, that's kind of what we're trying to, how to change this, you know?
Uh, so. One zone color here. And.
It looks like there's a.
There's a big change in the propane tank over twenty pounds. Um, we, well, the town gets charged is every, is a dollar charged for every pound over the twenty pound tank, so if it's fifty pound tank, it's fifty dollars. Hundred pound tank, it's a hundred dollars, so that has been warranted to mimic exactly what we are being charged to get rid of that propane tank, that's what we're. So five dollars for the twenty pound propane tank, that's exactly what we're being charged, we're not making much, a lot of money here, by any means. Where, you know, and the transfer station costs, as Tim mentioned before, is, you know, forty-six percent of the way around there, increase. We looked at June last year versus June this past year, and it was a ten thousand dollar, um, fee for the month versus eighteen thousand last year. So that's the kind of difference that we're looking at here, and it's, uh, making us being haul away. And it starts with how much can we collect to help reduce that cost. So, I mean, I, I, I was looking through, and, you know, it's, we're not the highest, I didn't pick the highest on everything, by any means. Uh, but I wanted to bring us more in line with our surrounding towns.
Yeah, and a lot of it's the multi-ways, the furniture, TVs, uh, the big stuff, and, and, you know.
And, you know, you're like a sleeper sectional, and it's gonna go from fifteen up to twenty, and, and these are not big jumps.
Yeah.
We wouldn't put the rates into effect till September first, we'd put out a, the sign, and so, you know, the rate increase September first, although, people gotta understand. Cost of fuel's up, cost of hauling's up, cost of demoing's up.
Personnel.
Personnel are up, everything going up, but. And, and I think, yeah, that's right, one of the things that happened, being the lowest around. Now, going back from the conversation with Jan, Jan saying, seeing a lot of out-of-towners and strange people coming here. I think that's what you're seeing, and also, I think we begin to pay that burden.
All right, um. What are we gonna do on this?
Is the recommendation to be up?
Yes, yeah.
Do we need a second reading on this particular one?
Uh, loud right on the loop, it's all right, now, regular business, yeah.
Uh, I would move to, uh, update transfer station two, show the both. On September first. September third, effective September. So.
We have a motion in a second, discussion.
Question, um. Have we done any work into, uh, host plans, I know that other areas of state in effort to decrease the weight of. Who weighs in bags, it's been explored about doing composting at the dump and stuff, uh, the transfer station or not. I'm not sure if you guys were, had any knowledge of that.
No, we, we haven't done any, any of that.
I see like big projects that, uh.
We just, we just, yeah, we barely have staffing to make sure that we're, we just have full staff.
Right, and then some other question is, how does a sticker on my window scare me away from. Dropping my trash there? Are we gonna release it, how, so we would have to hire another person to release it?
No, so if you have a visible sticker, so we would say, so here's one of the tricks, they said, you know, put it on your vehicle, so people put it below their license plates on their wheel wells. So, if we were to put a sticker when we've done, put the sticker in the opposite, one of the corners of the windshield, or right in corner of the passenger side. So everybody has a green sticker for the ensuing year, so people coming in the dump, they come in, you get in to buy a dump attendant at some point. Getting up top, getting down bottom, coming in, going around the corner, they don't, if they don't see one there, they're like, stop you and ask you where you're from, and if you can't show them here, they can take you off.
Okay, so, so it's just, it's enabling and empowering our current work, which is the least.
In reality, that will probably happen minimally, it's more kind of a, for the decent old people in the world to say, you know, ah, I'm not gonna risk it. Will some people do that? Yep, well, you know, it's just another way to kind of control the cost of product coming in.
And that would be a free sticker to anybody, yeah, and, yeah.
This is something you can stick up at another meeting, this whole sticker project, so.
Yeah, that, that would be something I'll present back to you with some ideas on how it would work, and so.
No, all right, okay, yeah, I would just like to make sure that the transfer station section of the website is updated, for people, or can maybe take down anything that's really updated, from still stuff.
Yeah, I'm being, I'm saying.
All right, we got a motion, and second on the table, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Um, the next one is, new fees for code enforcement, updating the proposed, uh, of road fees. There's not much of an increase, uh, basically what Jenny did is she looked at surrounding towns, she said some of our fees are way behind. So based on her proposal, uh, the few adopted what you had here, uh, the same permits. Today, building permits, loan permits have brought in thirty-eight thousand, forty-three dollars, forty cents. With the increase, the same permits could have brought in approximately thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, a difference of nineteen hundred dollars. It's not huge, but at least allows us to what everybody else is doing, and again, you know, a lot of our stuff has been updated in years, so.
Um, I will only, a motion to, motion to update, um, our code enforcement fees as proposed in the most important, oh, sorry, Barbara.
This is part of Chapter sixty, building construction, so you must hold it from here.
So was that an ordinance change?
Yes.
Okay, so then, I would just recommend that we put it on to public hearing.
Yeah. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. I didn't know.
Keeping with us. Okay, so that'll be a public hearing, I will later read, um, so no action required this evening. Right?
Sure.
Okay, um, new business number six, um, uh, possible action on a resolution, so some context here. Um, there's recently been, in this, in Southern Maine, some activity, um, by white nationalist groups. And, um, organizing, and, uh, we received a couple of communications from residents, uh, about this particular issue. And, um, wanted to bring forth, um, kind of the council taking a stance, Jeff, um, very graciously drafted a, a resolution, uh, for us, and I. I'm asking Barbara and Tim to keep me on it, as far as action here, I can't remember if we need to have multiple readings of this, or if this is something that we've wrote on.
I'm gonna do further, Barbara.
Instantly a resolution?
Yeah.
I, I, right, and you know what, I'm not, see.
It's not binding on.
It's not included in the report, so.
It's a separate thing.
So if you go back to the website.
Right.
The second, same as that resolution, yeah.
Yeah, it's not binding on your money or binding your land, or the question to do anything, it's just basically, I don't think, I think you can go on.
Yep, um, Jeff, sorry, do you want to add on this, since you?
I, I just, um, honestly, part of what led me to jump in on it was, number one, uh, I had a number of people bring it up to me. Um, but I found it, it, um, just amazing, the stark difference that while that was happening in Kidery. We were here welcoming and have an awesome display in here, and had a great weekend with our sister city, I just thought. We are here celebrating, uh, unity and, and growth and community while this is happening right next door. And I just felt like even more so to kind of, that we should make a stand and, uh, and say, this is what we're about, and I, I just felt like it was. It just went really well with what we are all about, and what we just showed we're all about, so.
Would you all like me to read it out loud?
I would like to hear, yeah, I know, you're getting into Second Amendment type of stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
You're mad I'm stupid, yeah, they were ready to be stupid.
Uh, Audrey, let me know if I'm reading too fast. Um, so this is the, the draft that Jeff put together, a resolution condemning white nationalism and extremist groups. Whereas the town council of the town of South Burwick, Maine, is proud to support policies and efforts that uphold our commitment to protect an individual's ability to experience a safe, welcoming, and inclusive community in South Burwick. Whereas in alignment with the town council's goal of creating a safe and welcoming community, we value human rights, respect, inclusivity, and equity, and recognize that we derive strength from our diversity. Whereas white nationalism is defined as the promotion of an idea, the national identity should be built around white ethnicity, and that white people should therefore maintain both a demographic majority. And dominance of the nation's culture and public life across the country. Whereas we recognize that there has been a rise of white nationalists and white supremacist groups in the United States, most recently in our neighboring towns, and that the national political dialogue reflects this racial tension. Whereas our community is committed to adjust and make inclusive republic, white nationalism places the interests of white people over those of other racial groups, and is an ideology focused on maintaining white political, economic, and demographic dominance. And it is at odds with our vision for South Burwick. Whereas free speech is a core principle of our American republic and the democratic institutions that underpin its existence. The agenda of white nationalist groups seeks to destabilize the American republic and use fear through threats and physical violence. As a control tactic, divide our community and promote and ignite social animosities. Whereas marginalized communities have experienced general, generational oppression and traumas related to the decisions made by people of governments both in the past and present. White supremacy groups have a history of advocating for the marginalization of communities of color through government policies. Whereas the trauma inflicted on black people, people of color, Muslim and Jewish people, religious minorities, the LGBTQ community, and other marginalized groups by white supremacists. Results in generally, the generational and psychological harm affecting health, education, economic, and social outcomes. Whereas the town of South Burwick has a history and commitment of celebrating and supporting people of all races, national origins, immigration, and refugee statuses. Religions, gender, gender identities, sexual orientations, abilities, ages, and economic status. Whereas the town of South Burwick is committed to building trust among all its residents, along with its sister city, Tuskegee, Alabama. Included, including continued work and collaboration to ensure inclusion and welcome diversity. Now therefore, be resolved by the town council of the town of South Burwick and municipal corporation of the state of Maine as, as follows. The town council is committed to making South Burwick a welcoming, inclusive, and safe community for everyone. We condemn hate, xenophobia, racism, white supremacy, antisemitism, islamophobia, homophobia, transphobia. Ableism, sexism, and other forms of bigotry. The town council is committed to standing in solidarity with the people of South Burwick, and opposing white supremacy, and creating a community where all people can safely, freely, and fully engage in our democracy. We will not tolerate hate in any form, and will pursue policies to ensure civil and human rights to all individuals. This resolution effect is effective immediately upon its passage, there.
I have a question, what is ableism?
Uh, relating to, um. Uh, ableism, is it in like different forms of physical ability?
Like it's sort of addressing, uh, folks who have. uh, folks who have different needs, yeah, discrimination in favor of able-bodied people. Um. Any discussion from anybody on this?
Any motion will be accepted as well.
Second, good motion, a second, any discussion from the council?
I agree, it's, yeah, it's sort of a motion.
I think what you wrote, I agree with everything in this. However, I think you're throwing a flag out there, because when the Ku Klux Klan, and the Ku Klux Klan was very active in the state of Maine at an early period of time, there's been old bomb houses out my way, where well, going the whole, where the grandparents die and they clean an empty house, well, there's the costume, you know, and there's, I know out my way, there's, there's pigeons that I think they're jerks, and I think you're waving a red flag in front of the bull by coming out as officials. Now, I think it's the duty of every citizen, if you believe that, to call someone out, the neighbor, the, like, make them show, showing a vanity, I don't buy into this hatred, I really don't. But I know there are people that hate, and they have rights too. And when they apply, I don't know if they have to apply for a permit to do a march, do they? I don't know. But when they do, and you don't have the ordinance, it's a supplement, what was it, what was that Supreme Court decision? With the Ku Klux Klan, was it in, was some city, I shouldn't call this one constitutional law, but they, you know, they had the right to march. I think you're throwing a, I think, I think you planted a thought here, and I think you should really open it up, there's people listening here, let them speak, let them, I, I think this deserves some discussion. I agree with everything the article said, but I do think you're stirring up a, you know, you've not got a honeck messed up in the tree over here, you don't go poking at it with a stick in the daytime. Because it makes more trouble than it's worth.
So I do just want to clarify, Audrey, this is just a resolution, this isn't, um, an ordinance or, or anything that will be sort of as law.
You are representatives of every citizen in the town of South Berwick, and I think, because this I didn't see this, that would be, maybe I didn't give it in the accompanying documents. But I think there is an impul, if you leave it out there, okay, I'm waiting for an impulsive point of view, you get it out, if no one says nay, then hey, we're on agreement, and I do agree with it, I don't want you to think I'm one of those stupid, stupid, you have the right to be stupid in America, you really do.
Thank you, any other discussion from the council?
Well, back in the thirties, people said, it's only the sedate one, what do we care about checkers about? And so, no, we didn't, no come our way. It's only the sedate one, checkers are buying. Just a little piece over there, forget about it, so. Um. I like the language, Jeff, I think that there's, you know, this is a um, it, it's a, it's a manifesto, to be sure. But it's, 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 uh, it says good things. And, and I don't disagree with it, so I'm, I'm gonna vote for it. I don't know, I'll seek the advice of the staff, should we have our attorney look at it, in case there is, I think it's the First Amendment type thing, as far as we're infringing on anybody's that you can, one of the things that can risk our problem, our personal assets. And we're covered by, you know, sovereign immunity and many, many things, but if we violate some of the civil rights, that's a federal deal. And if something, if there was an inference in that, that is something that perhaps we should consider, that, that, that could there be a civil rights plan as a result of this, and we were, we're all going in.
Probably would, probably would hurt some of the people.
Yeah.
And I've got many questions for you, because this you're not saying any, any support.
It hasn't fact-checked it, or, you know, probably mine. Um, is this something that is then, that is somewhere else, or is this something that you created, not even that, just pretty.
I'm, okay, I, I'm, this, we're, we're not acting any, any rules, we're just making a stance. So whether, whether we did it, then we'd be going through the ordinance.
Right, but however you're making a statement has a political point. It has a political statement, and Audrey, you have to write, you represent everybody in the town. I think, two things, if you said, you know, we'll, we'll do a final vote in August, the first meeting in August, meantime, run it by, uh, run it by legal, there's no issue, you can get any feedback by then. That's all, that would be my suggestion, do what you want, you have the council.
If I may, out of chair, what I, what I would suggest is that you adopt it if that is your wishes. Pending attorney, then you don't have to put it on the agenda and discuss it, I'll refer that in.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Then pending approval by the council. Or is there the problem, we break back, we break back on the table. So that's in my motion?
I just did. It's good, okay, yeah, by all means. Um, I heard, like, I was in participation with a Tuskegee group, and the mayor was saying that we have to take stands, that we have to be brave, and draw lines, and, so I appreciate you making time for us.
Yes, absolutely, thank you, Jeff, um, I think because it's very well written, and it's something that is wish that more, more people would, would do.
I think you have to do a resolution.
Yeah.
I don't know how you can do that, I don't know, you're starting in.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table, any other discussion? All those in favor of adopting the resolution condemning white nationalism and extremist groups pending legal approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Thank you, Jeff. All right, um, council member, comments, okay?
Um.
What?
Sure.
Comments, I just wanted to thank Tim, that was a great, um, great show of hospitality to our, our neighbors, I think you were very creative and very meaningful, and very appreciative to all the town staff that were.
Yeah.
Nothing.
None for me either. Um, all right, so we have an executive session to go into, so we'll make the motions to go to executive session, Barbara, I will send you the scoop of us coming out, okay?
Excellent.
And then we know who did this.
Yeah, no, no, this is taken out, we're, you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I'll move to the executive session for someone's one, MRSA. The executive sign.
Four, five, and say for some.
Yeah, I just had to add.
I mean, no, I have.
Okay, I made a vote, move to the executive session.
Okay, so, uh, all those in favor going to executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero.